Thank you. Newman.
Yes.
Thank you. George.
Yay.
Thank you. Kevin Hastings.
Yay.
Tom?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Awesome. Andrew Walts?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome. And then Andrea, me, yay, and then I have Jenna.
Hi, sorry, what are we voting on? Sorry to be late.
Approval of the agenda with the addition of reappointment of the short-term vacation rental subcommittee.
Ah, okay, yay.
Yay, okay, great, awesome. So there were no minutes tonight, so we'll go ahead and move on from that. Tracy is sick, apologies, but we do have recording of last month meeting, I think, on our Facebook, so you can still look at that. We will try to get the draft minutes up as soon as possible. So right along, I think I do see Teddy is here. Hi Teddy. So I'm going to turn the floor over to him for all those who have never been here. Teddy is our representative to our council member Campbell's office, and he will give a brief report on what's going on down at City Hall.
Thanks Andrea. I hope everyone's doing well. I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving. Holiday season is upon us, and I hope everyone's staying safe and healthy. Some trying times we're all facing. I don't want to take too much time. Happy to take questions at the end, but there are some things I wanted to share. Obviously, the Planning Commission is reviewing STBR proposal by Councilmember Campbell this week, and I know you all have a lot of input on that. We really appreciate it. I want to give a particular shout out to everyone at the Planning Board who's chimed in on this throughout the year. You guys really helped us with forming this idea, and we're there every step of the way. Even before I came on, this group was super vocal about it, and I think one of our most vocal communities. So we appreciate the input and happy to take any feedback on that. I'm not working on it. I'm not the point person on it, so I can't really dive into too many details, but I do appreciate that the Planning Board has been really providing strong input for the community on this for our office. So thanks for that. The other thing I want to share, we had a briefing today on the CIP budget mid-year monitoring report. It's capital improvement projects that the Planning Board has also been very vocal on, from coastal access to the lifeguard station to pier projects. We're all working on it. And the good update was that we did get completion of the lifeguard station study, and Councilmember Campbell is asking for that copy of the study. And that's going to do is try to dictate what can be done, what can be built by the ocean, given sea level rise and things like that. So we're happy that the study's done. That's the good news. We have some intel on what's possible. The bad news from that meeting was that there's a big funding gap in getting the full completion. So Councilmember Campbell made it very clear that she's going to try to get funding for this project in the next budget through the city budget, but also through other avenues, whether that's federal funding, state funding. It's a major priority for her in the CIP budget. So I just wanted to share that because I know it's super important to this group. The other thing I want to share is that Councilmember Campbell attended the Doors of Change Symposium last night. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Doors of Change, but I went to visit one of their classes before the pandemic to see like what they were about, what they were doing, and I was so impressed with their focus on transitional aged youth. And I don't know why, but it just hit a spot for me. They're trying to reach youth through music and arts, something that I grew up with, and so I can definitely relate to. And they had a symposium on transitional aged youth, 17 to 25-year-olds, who fall into homelessness and have gotten help through arts and music. And it's a local OB organization, nonprofit that's doing this. And they brought formerly homeless youth to share their stories about how they went from being homeless to now being engineers, lawyers, doctors. I mean, it was just such an impressive event that I wanted to share with the community because I was happy that Councilmember could attend and give them kudos for doing a lot of good work. The transitional age youth population, as Ocean Beach really knows about, is a different subset of homelessness that takes a different approach. And so our community action plan on homelessness that was adopted last year had three major goals. And one of those goals was to end and prevent transitional aged youth homelessness. And we recently got an update from the San Diego Housing Commission on how we're doing in meeting those goals. And in one year, we've already reduced unsheltered homelessness for transitional aged youth by 37%. And so I wanted to highlight that because I think that it gets superfluous when the council has plans and goals. And an organization like Doors of Change really brings it home and really shows these are the groups that are doing the work on the ground to make those differences in those people's lives. And we wouldn't be able to reach that 37% without them. So I just wanted to give that group a shout out and share that with the community that Councilmember Campbell was there supporting them. And if you all have a chance to look into them, I encourage you to do it. They're really great. Last thing I want to share is we're at the end of year, and we are hosting an end-of-year community meeting on December 16th. It's going to merge with Point Loma, and this was just out of necessity to get as many communities as we can without having to be redundant throughout the week. So OB will be grouped with Point Loma on December 16th, and it'll be really a chance to see the progress that we've done this year and really give the community an opportunity to provide their feedback. We'll have a survey that will go out, and if there is a chat here, I think there is, I'll share the link to register. But that'll be a good opportunity to kind of get Councilmember Campbell's perspective on what we've accomplished this year, what her vision is going forward, and gain some input from the community on what we can do better next year. So I'm excited for that. I hope you can attend. I'll put the link to register in the chat. And that's really all I have. I'm happy to answer questions, but other than that, I hope you all are doing well.
Great, thank you. Do I have any questions for Teddy? Or Councilmember Campbell's office? Okay, wonderful. I do not see Miller here from Tony Atkins' office, so I'm going to move on to Aaron Burgess. I thought I saw you here from County Supervisor Nathan Fletcher's office. Aaron?
Hey, everyone. How's it going? Can you see me?
I can hear you. I can't see you though, but I have a lot of people.
Yeah, it's lagging on my end. I don't have much to report. Just wanted to talk about some of the COVID relief that the county approved of. We have $20 more million in business relief funding, and then we have... People can qualify for an assistance of up to $3,000 to pay for past or upcoming rent. The business grants. So if you've already applied for the grant, you don't need to reapply, but we would be considering new applications as well. And lastly, I want to mention that, yeah, COVID is spiking. The numbers aren't looking too good, so more shutdowns, you know. We're on the brink of doing bigger shutdowns, but one of the, I guess, the light at the end of the tunnel is that the COVID vaccine is being developed and could be administered pretty soon. When it gets to San Diego, I don't know, but we're definitely preparing for storage of the vaccines.
Does the county have a distribution plan, or is it still too early?
Still too early for me. I think that the plan is being developed. But I think in a couple of weeks, I can come back and let you know, or at the leaders' meeting.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Aaron or the county? Any way to access the new relief that's being out there? I'll be happy to get you his email. If you do want to contact me offline, I'll put you in touch with the supervisor's office. Awesome, great. So we're moving on to non-agenda comment now, and I did see one person put their name in the chat, Gary Wanacott. Are you here for non-agenda public comment? I believe. I would think so. Gary?
I'm sorry.
No, go for it.
I'm here for an agenda item. Sorry.
Sorry, what agenda item?
Yes, well, on the vacation rentals.
Okay. Great. Okay, so does anyone else have a non-agenda public comment?
I don't think vacation rentals is on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so I do have a comment. So if that's okay.
Yeah.
So I'm surprised to hear that Councilmember Campbell, her office has met with the OB planning group prior to release of her STR regulations, because I don't know of anybody else that she met in Mission Beach or Pacific Beach. I know that the Mission Beach Precise Planning Board met, and after quite a bit of discussion, overwhelmingly rejected Tier Four, which is the carve-out of Mission Beach, as well as other parts of the proposal. The STR Committee, which is part of the Mission Beach Town Council, also sent a letter in opposing the 30% carve-out of Mission Beach. So I think there is, I would say, pretty overwhelming opposition to the carve-out and to the proposal in general. I don't know how much time I have. I sent in a list of probably 15 items that I could bring up that are items that support opposition to this proposal. I do know that if the carve-out goes through, there will be legal ramifications based on equal protection that I'm sure will come up. You know, this proposal just does not have the kind of enforcement that is necessary. It lacks permit requirements that should actually be in there, including just verification of legal construction. In other words, we have a lot of people in Mission Beach who have converted their garages into studio vacation rentals and things of that sort, parking, occupancy limits. The list kind of goes on. So with that, I just want to convey a summary of kind of what's coming out of Mission Beach at this point.
Oh, wait. Yeah, thank you so much, Gary. And I will be dropping all the info if anyone does want to sign in for comments or sign up to talk tomorrow during the chair's report. So I'll make sure to get you guys all of that at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Lisa Lind. I didn't know you were going to come tonight, or else I would have put you up with the report. So before we do dive in, I am going to give the floor to Lisa for a second. She's our new planner. I know you guys, Nathan Cosman was our old planner and made a couple appearances, but we have since, yeah. You're cutting up a little bit, Lisa.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Lind. I work for the Planning Department at the City of San Diego. So this is my first Ocean Beach meeting. I know Andrea from Community Planners Committee, but look forward to attending some of your meetings throughout the year and being a resource where you need it. If you do have any questions, and Andrea thinks there's time on the agenda, I can take a few minutes to answer any questions you have.
Great. Yeah, so Lisa is our planner, so she does review, you know, all of the projects that come through and help with our community plan. So anytime you have any questions about larger planning processes for Ocean Beach, I'd be more than happy to put you in touch with Lisa. But we do have a lot to get to tonight, so we're going to dive right in. But this is a great agenda for you to attend. Okay, so first up, we do have the Bermuda Stairs project. So I think I saw Gretchen. Gretchen, will you be presenting this?
No, I'm here to answer questions on environmental.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so then I think, is it Heidi? Who do I have from the city to present for?
Lynn, Helen.
Great, you're cutting up just a little bit, Lynn.
Today.
Okay, wonderful. So the floor is yours. You are able to share your screen for the presentation.
Okay. Thank.
Okay, wonderful. That should be open as well for them. And again, if you are here to comment, a public comment for the Bermuda Stairs, please do put your name in the chat with Bermuda Stairs next to it, so I can get to you when we are taking public testimony.
Len Kizerhwa. This project was timed from...
Hi Lynn, this is Christina. I'm going to be sharing my screen for the presentation.
Christina.
Please let me know if you see it.
Yep. I can see it. Perfect, thank you. This, just a little bit about the project. This is located on the Stand Up for the Avenue of the beach community. The existing service has deteriorated over time, and our project is proposing new that will restore the beach access. And for the project updates and the last presentation earlier this year, our design has advanced from 60% design to 100%. During this passage, we have been working with the City of San Diego Development Services Department for the site development permits and coastal development permits. Simultaneously, we had worked very closely with the California Coastal Commission. We have completed a sea level rise analysis per their request, and also we did a few alternative studies for the stair configuration to achieve a better design of the stair, to have a more robust structure and have the configuration of stairs to be the best option for the constraints we have on site. So today here, we are presenting with the 100% design, and I think this is one of the last steps for us to obtain the environmental permits. We are excited and happy to be here to present with more details of the project and obtain a vote so that we can move forward with the project. This community vote will help us address, I think, is the one last remaining comment for the discretionary permits. And once that process is completed, our next step would be our building permit review process. That being said, I will turn the floor to our civil engineer. And we'll have a question to answer first.
All right.
I'll take over.
Will do. Thank you, Lynn. As Lynn mentioned, my name, I'll just give a little background of myself. My name is Christina Taborga. I work with Moffett and Nickel, who is supporting brick engineering on this project. My role on it is the lead structural designer for the stairs. So as Lynn had mentioned, I'm going to give a little bit of background, just so that everyone's familiar. I know most of you are, but just a background info on why this project came about. So as she had mentioned, the stairs are currently deteriorated, and so it's not actually accessible for any public use right now. So if you were to go to the site location right now, you would see that it's actually fenced off at the entrance along Bermuda Avenue. So here is a photo of what the current stairs look like, which is why it's fenced off. You can see that it's deteriorated and failed, and it's pretty much broken up into two pieces, where you have the bottom portion essentially separated from the top portion of the stairs. Now, as Lynn mentioned, this project is mainly to provide access to the beach for public use, and so we want to restore that access point at this project location. So because of the age and the condition of these stairs, it was decided early on during the concept development that we were going to construct a new set of stairs rather than try to repair the existing structure. And then, as Lynn mentioned, and as you all know, we had presented to you guys at the 60% design level of our design. We're now at the 100%, so I'm going to provide you kind of the updates that we have currently. But during that process, we had provided our design recommendations to the California Coastal Commission, and through their review, they had required us to look at several alternatives, alignments for the stairway system. And so if I move on to the next page, from that investigation, we looked at several alternatives. And because of the location, we were really driven for the alignment based off of, you know, there's a lot of site constraints that we have to deal with. So in this photo, we noted several constraints that we had to work with in order to get the stairs alignment to be approved by the Coastal Commission, which, as you guys have the 100% plans, that was approved by the Coastal Commission. So item that I wanted to kind of just briefly touch on was not included as part of the scope of this project is the existing seawall and the tieback system. So we had to make sure that our stairs were completely separate and independent from the seawall. Also, on the right-hand side of the photo, you can see the existing block. We really wanted to make sure that we did not encroach onto that portion of the bluff. And then on the left-hand side, near the top locations of the stairway, is an existing concrete vault, and that's to remain. So we really had a very narrow alignment, I guess you can say, to work with. With that being said, though, it makes most sense, and we did, as I mentioned, we did get the approval from the Coastal Commission with the alignment for the 100% design, which is shown in this rendering. Because of the alignment, it's actually three flights of stairs. And because of all of the constraints at the site, the alignment is similar to, it's not the exact same, but it is similar to the existing stairway. Because the stairs is a new design, we have to make sure that we meet current codes. And so our stairs are designed to be code compliant with the latest California building code. And with the stairs located right along the beach, we wanted to make sure that it could handle all of the environmental impacts associated with being right along the coastline. So it is a very durable and robust design that is able to handle any of the coastal impacts, such as sea level rise, wave fluctuations, storm surges, and tidal elevations. Now, as I had mentioned previously, the stairs themselves, as I mentioned, it's separate, completely separate from the seawall. So in order to have a self-supporting structure, the stairs themselves have their own foundation. The foundations consist of three elements. You have the concrete piles, which are supporting the top and middle landing of the stairs. And then the bottom portion is relatively a solid concrete block, because this is seeing majority of all of the wave forces or all of the ocean forces, and that is supported on a concrete footing. Now, as part of the design, in order to ensure we had a stable system, we looked at extreme environmental conditions to ensure that we didn't have any potential failure or tried to minimize the potential failures of the stairs. So here is a section of the stair system of our drawings, where you can see that we actually embedded our foundations into what I'm calling the bedrock elevation, which is this brown-yellowish line on the bottom. And that actually represents what we call competent soil, which is mostly considered a non-erodible, non-erodible soil conditions, meaning that if we have extreme environmental waves or storm surges, the waves will wash out the sand, and it'll erode the beach pretty much all the way down to this bedrock elevation. So to ensure we have a stable system, we embedded our foundation into that competent soil. Now, this top line, as I had mentioned, because of the waves could fluctuate, the sand elevations vary depending on the seasons, as well as depending on the year, time of the year. We wanted to make sure that we were able to accommodate that with our design. And then, as Lynn had also mentioned, as part of the review for the Coastal Commission, they had us evaluate different extreme environmental scenarios. So we looked at a 100-year storm event and what that would do to the stairway design. So this blue box kind of represents what that water level is relative to the stairs. So the bottom line represents what that flood elevation is for the 100-year storm event, and the top line represents the maximum wave height that you would see for that 100-year storm event. So we made sure that our design is able to handle this case scenario. In addition to the sea level rise, we were asked to evaluate a sea level rise for the year 2050 with the 100-year storm event. So if you were to look at the water levels relative to that condition, it's shown here in the navy blue box, where at the crest of the wave will hit the top of the stairs. And so we made sure that in our design, we were able to accommodate the 100-year storm event with the year 2050 sea level rise. Now, in addition, to make sure that our structure is stable and able to handle all of those extreme forces, our design of our concrete itself is a very durable system, as I had mentioned. So we are specifying high-quality marine-grade concrete to be able to handle all of those forces, as well as, because the environment here is in a really corrosive environment, we wanted to make sure that we try to minimize the amount of corrosion as possible. So we are calling out stainless steel handrails. And then, as we all know, the sand and water levels can obviously go along up and down the stairs steps themselves. It fluctuates depending on the time of day or the year, or the time of the year. And so to try to provide as much safe access for the public, we are implementing design elements such as a color-contrasted coating to the stairs with grooves embedded in there to ensure, at the nosings of the steps, to ensure a non-skid or a non-slip surface. And then Lynn, I will hand it back to you for the project budget and schedule.
Okay, thank you, Christina. So the project costs? At least the same information. I'm sure you have the ticket. Because there have happened changes to the design through the process right now. We are currently receiving these. Now, and figuring out what type of wood. It's construction. It's some 2021. The contract schedule, the city will be applying for moratorium and New York activities during this time. Okay, so coming back to the group and get some support from the community. Where for any sort of comments?
Awesome. Well, thank you guys so much.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys so much. So I am going to start, yeah, if you could, so I could see everyone again, and then it'll make my job a little bit easier. So I'm going to start with board members with their questions first, then we're going to move to public questions. And then we can go hop back over to the board so we can make a decision. So I will, I'll just go list again, and when I call your name, if you do have any questions, just go, go right on ahead. So so I'm going to start the the Gronski. So Jane, Tom. Let me get a grid back so I can see everyone's face too. Do do do. Okay. Jane, Tom, do you, do either of you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think it's about time that we got the stays, the steps fixed.
Thank you, Jane. Um. Wonderful. Okay, so I'm going to move down to Richard. Richard, any questions about the project design?
I do not have any questions. No questions.
Good. Virginia.
I'm happy to see that it's happening. And I hope we can get the waiver and get it started as soon as possible, even if it is during the summer.
So now I have Chris. Moving right along.
Um, just a couple of comments. I think some good consideration given to sea level rise and wave heights and the different seasons. So I'm trying to recall back to the the last update we got at the 60% level. But I would just echo one of the comments I know I provided. We tried to work with Mother Nature rather than fight it. And I think putting a wall, a big concrete wall, which will eventually be broken down, you know, whatever the time period is, it'll be broken down, is less preferable than finding a way to have more of a, you know, low profile, almost, you know, freestanding with minimal lakenings so that the water can pass and run through even with the rises and the and the falls of the sea level. And a good reference point for that, I think we talked about it at that 60% meeting was just up the coast in Laguna Beach, there are stairwells of sort of the nature that I just described. So I realize we're at 100% design and we're not going back, but I just wanted to throw those comments out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Moving on to Anthony. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Christine and Lynn for their presentation. The design looks robust and great, and thank you, and I have no questions.
Okay. Um, Craig. Okay, no questions. You're breaking up a little bit. Okay. Craig, you're really cutting in and out. I'm sorry. Do you maybe want to write down your comments and then we can circle back? All right. Okay, then George. Do you have any questions?
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin.
Yeah, I got a question. I'm hoping this, as soon as it gets a permit, is going to get funded. That's been my experience on other projects like this, that anything shovel-ready gets gets funding transferred to it. Is that, is that going to happen?
I can answer that. That's certainly our plan. Yeah, to receive funding so that we can start construction per the schedule that we mentioned.
Okay, I appreciate that, and the project's long overdue, so I'm excited to see it and enjoy it. The summer moratorium waiver is absolutely necessary because building this during the winter time is not even a possibility. It's, we saw what happened last time. We gave that a try. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Tom, Nicole. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to reiterate the comments that this is a project that's long overdue, and we are all very much looking forward to restoring coastal access here.
Right. Thank you, Nicole. Andrea.
Hi there. Thanks for the presentation. I definitely remember the 60% presentation. And I certainly echo Chris's sentiments on kind of just how he phrased it. I would also echo the, or I'd also suggest the, or ask if any consideration has been brought to the shifting sand or other sentiments that might happen and get locked or change behind that kind of negative space between the steps and the wall itself. And before you answer that, just one other quick thought is, and I'm sure you have, but just a quick question on that. actions. You know, I, regardless of any other changes, I'd be, I'd love to see this move forward as quickly as possible. So please let us know if there's anything we can do to help expedite the process regardless of what, you know, ends up being the final, final plan.
Okay, thanks for the question, Andrew. So I know you had asked in regards to that bottom portion, whether of how I guess the stairs are aligned the way they are relative, so that the sand, I guess, as you're saying, kind of gets shielded or whatnot around there. And the reason why it was aligned the way it was is because we're really restricted. We wanted to minimize the amount of beach access as possible, so we're not sticking out into the water as well as the bluffs themselves. It's not really a straight line along the shoreline. It actually kind of angles back into the ocean. And so the way we we angled or the way we aligned the stairs is to accommodate with the bluffs as well as to minimize impacts onto the beach. And so we had to use some clearance, so just to get construction in there. So that's why it was aligned that way.
Andrew, does that answer your question? Or do you follow?
Oh, I guess I'm not sure if that actually answers the question. It's really, so I don't know if if you could jump back to the screen or something, but the steps almost make like a V or C shape. And you're going to eventually essentially have waves coming in this way and then have a deposit of sediment or sand that's caught in this little shape. So I didn't know if that would create issues, you know, with things not being clearly washed out. In the, in this season, right now, we see five, 10 feet of seaweed get caught on the beach and then daily get washed back out. So I don't know if stuff will get caught in there and then not wash out again. You know, so that was kind of my concern, I guess.
Noted. Yeah, maintenance can, do we have a full maintenance plan for how often these stairs are going to be cleaned? Because like Chris said, you know, freestanding stairs would allow the flow of seaweed, you know, often on the stairs. But now with the rigid construction as it is, if seaweed is, does appear on the stairs or any sand builds up on the stairs, is there a plan to daily, weekly come by and maintain those? I know you said we had someone from Parks and Rec here.
We have, I think Paul Jacob is with us from Parks and Recreation tonight, but I'm not sure if his connection to this meeting has been been worked out. Our design doesn't specifically come with a maintenance plan, but the Parks and Recs. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, so this is, this is Paul Jacob with the Park and Recreation Department. We have in the past and continue to maintain all of the spare access points along the entire city coast. And this stairway will just fall in with our regular maintenance routine for all of the coastal access points. Generally, they're maintained on an as-needed basis. So typically, after a major winter storm, we would go through the entire inventory of coastal access points. And generally, the the main maintenance requirement would be to clear kelp off of the stairways and untangle it from the railings and stuff like that. And we've, we've incorporated that into our regular maintenance budget, and so it'll be the same as it is with all the other points. And that's, that's not on a regular scheduled basis. A lot of times in the summertime, you can go many weeks without any high surf impacting those stairs. But certainly, we ramp up our inspection and maintenance activities in the wintertime when you get most of the high surf events and the and the big kelp racks that pile up there. So, yeah, we've, we've historically maintained all those stairways and will continue to do so in the future.
Great. So would it be just something that's in addition to RSL's route that she checks on and then reports on maintenance?
Yes, we have the typical ground maintenance workers would would drive by do a quick inspection and where there's work needed, they would relay that back to our citywide maintenance crews who would then come out and then take care of any maintenance that needs to be done. Typically, it's, it's limited to cleaning up sand deposits and kelp deposits. If there's any sort of structural maintenance that needs to be required, sometimes kelp gets wrapped around the railings and and has bent and damaged railings in the past. We have another city division, our facilities, maintenance crews would come out and they have all of the equipment and personnel necessary to take care of maintenance like that. Obviously, large structural damage, we would probably have to call in a consultant or a as-needed contractor to come out and do any concrete repairs. But typically, that would be very rare, if ever, for a stairway like this.
Thank you. Great. So Jenna, and then I'm going to get to Craig's question. Thanks for typing it out, Craig.
I don't have any questions. I'm just also excited that this project is moving forward.
Okay, wonderful. So I am going to loop back to Craig's. Craig did just reference, and I recall from the last meeting as well, that we really did act, you know, the stairwell was going to face this, that it wouldn't be so much of a flat concrete wall, as that absorbs a lot more force than a more triangular shape would. Why was, why were those designs not considered? As opposed to the just flat wall that you're presenting now?
Yeah, thanks, Lynn. So as part of the sea level rise study, we did take a look at the, as I mentioned, we looked at 100-year storm events and sea level rise. And we looked at what you're talking about is kind of creating a curvature along the face of the wall to kind of reflect back the the waves. And we did evaluate that, but we kind of weighed out the cost associated with putting in kind of a curved profile versus a straight wall. And that we saw on, on that wasn't that significant, that would cause us to create that curved profile surface. So we did look at it, but it didn't, cost-wise, it didn't make a, it didn't jump us to do that, to do it that way.
Okay, thank you. Did I? Virginia, I do see your hand up.
I have another question, if I might. I noticed at the old stairway, after that one wall was finished, have you, first of all, have you studied the effect of the waves as they recede, as the water recedes from the beach? That's what my question concerns. The what they were doing and what might have hastened the failure was as the water receded, it would scour out the sand around the corner that, the bottom corner that's closer to the, to the cliff. And it looked like it was going to undermine the bottom step there, and it may have caused it to fail. Have, have you considered that? And how it might affect the footing there when the water washes back out around that corner?
Hi, Virginia. Yes, this is Christina. We did take a look at what you're talking about, the undermining of the beach erosion. And so we did look at those extreme conditions. And so we embedded all of our foundations into that competent soil that I talked about, the non-erodible soil layer, so that way we don't have that issue.
Okay, great. Great. So I'm not seeing any community questions in the chat box. Anthony, Kevin, is one of you monitoring Facebook? Are there any questions coming up through there from the community?
Not yet.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to ask one more time. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Okay. Do I have possibly a motion?
This is Anthony. I guess I'll, I'll move to have the board.
Oh, Anthony, one second. Craig did get one. Craig Klein did want to know, is the non-erodible soil the point on the part of the Point Loma Formation?
Sorry, I was on muted. Yes, the Point Loma Formation is the bedrock foundation. Yes, non-erodible soil layer.
Great. Before Anthony, you make your motion, Craig, do you have any more follow-up questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Craig. No. Okay, Anthony, so I'll give you the floor.
All right. I recommend that the board moves to approve the project that's presented today.
Awesome. And we have a second from Andrew. Great. I would, so just in the essence of time, is there any objections to agreeing to waive the summer moratorium now? So the city doesn't come back, I think, I mean, just the way we have, you know, everyone has pushed for this project for so long. I don't want to, you know, waste our time, waste the community's time, waste the city's time anymore if they have to come back and get that waiver. Would there be any objection to also adding to that motion? If the city so needs a summer moratorium waiver, we notwithstanding any changes to the stairs, we'd be more than happy to grant it. Would anyone object to that?
Good point. Can you add that into the motion?
I object to how long that is. Can we, can we phrase that as?
I was trying to find the right words.
Can we phrase that as move to approve the project as presented? And the board strongly supports a summer, an exemption of the summer moratorium, if necessary.
Sounds like a good motion.
I'm agreeable to that.
Great. Okay, and Andrew Walt says the second. Are you also? Perfect. Okay, so I will go ahead and, okay, women also seconded. It was a tie second. Okay, so I'm going to go call the role. Kevin, you're going to record?
Yes.
Okay, great. So please do say yay or nay if you can. Craig, I guess it's a thumbs up, thumbs down for you. Okay? Okay, awesome. So I'm going to start back at the top. Tracy Derrick not here. Jane, Gronski?
Yay.
And I'll just do Tom.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Okay, Richard Merriman?
Yes, approve.
Virginia Wilson?
Yes.
Awesome. Christopher, Chris?
No.
Okay, Anthony?
Yes.
Craig Klein? Okay. Great. George?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? Oh, I already, Nicole, sorry, that was my.
Yay.
Andrew Walt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Myself is a yay. Jenna?
Yay.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. So as far as the city goes, would you guys also like me to go through the standard procedure of submitting the Form 620 online? Or how, or do you need, just want a copy of the minutes? For the city project?
I think we're okay with just the minutes, and we'll let you know if we need anything additional. But just the minute should be fine.
Okay, wonderful. We'll try to queue back to those ASAP. Our secretary is sick. So as soon as we do have draft minutes, we'll try and get them to you guys, you all.
Andrea, was Craig and Newman a yay on that one?
I saw thumbs up, yes, from both of them.
Okay.
Craig, am I mistaken?
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button, but yes.
Okay, great. So I'm, so we're going to close that and move on to Mariners Cove, in which I think, again, we have a lot of participants. So if you are seeking to speak on this project, please do leave your name in the chat box. We'd love to hear back from you. This project, again, is in very early preliminary stages. So this is the best time to give feedback. If you do want input on the, if you do want to have a voice in the project and how it's going to go, you know, now's the time to do it. We'll see it again, but once the ball kind of starts to get rolling and designs get more firm, your voice just may have a little less of an impact. But that's why we're seeing the project early. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and toss it back over to Ben.
Thank you. All right, good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity. Good evening to your board and the members of the community. I wanted to thank Kevin Hastings in particular for the consideration of the project review committee back in October and his group. We really appreciated that. We've also been able to brief the Midway Pacific Highway Group and the Peninsula Community Planning Board, just to keep them informed. You all have the jurisdiction, but they're in such close proximity to where this project is. We also wanted to communicate with them. We've been doing so. And also talking with Jennifer Campbell's office too, along the way. We realize this is the first shot with you all, and we look forward to the next one as well. But thanks for hearing us in this preliminary way. Let me introduce Patty Schwaeder and Derek Ulian, who will give the presentation from Aimco. We also have some other members of our team here tonight too, to answer questions. But Patty can introduce everybody. So let me turn it over to Patty.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you, members of the committee. Hope you can hear me. I've been going in and out all night for some technical reason. So raise your hand if you can. But again, thank you for having us being in front of you tonight. Early is better, and this is a long way on this project. But we appreciate it, again, being at the committee with Kevin, and I see Jane and some other folks. And would like to go through a quick presentation and then turn it over to your views. And I am with my partner, Derek Ulian, who is our Vice President of Redevelopment in California. So we're going to share this quick presentation. And Derek, do you want to roll the first slide, please? Great. Mariners Cove, about Aimco, more apartment investment management committee. We're probably the largest big company you maybe never heard of. We're one of the largest owners of apartments in the country, and we're a public company in our 25th year. We own more than 10,000 apartments in 40 communities in California. We're a long-term owner of eight apartments in San Diego with more than 2,300 homes. Our chairman and CEO is from San Diego, and his family is too. So we're really committed to the area, and we're one of these companies that want to be part of the neighborhood and part of the community. And that's the spirit in which we come to you tonight and have come to the other planning groups through the city as well. We're a longtime owner of affordable housing. At one time, we were the largest owner of affordable housing in the country, and that's important to this project, and I know it's important to San Diego. And we've owned Mariners Cove for quite a long time, since 2002. Want to spend a couple of seconds on Aimco Cares, which is our philanthropic option and program. And because, as I said, we are all about community. And when we get back to being community and being able to be with you in person, if you have projects in the area that you want to partner with us on, we would love to do that as well. Derek, do you want to move to the next one? So Mariners Cove, I'm sure everybody knows where it is. This is the site plan as it is today, off West Point Loma Boulevard, adjacent to the Barnes Tennis Center, the Famosa Slough, and Nimitz Boulevard. You can hit the next one, Derek. While we've maintained this complex well over the years, it is obsolete and in need of not only a little love, but a lot of love. So we are looking at plans for a total redevelopment, which we think will be exciting, and hopefully, we trust a credit to the area and a great neighbor to you all as well. Want to hit the next one? So what are our goals? Create a community that respects and enhances the neighborhood, consistent with your plan, the Ocean Beach Community Plan. And we spent a lot of time studying it, looking at it, figuring out what we could do to contribute to that plan. We know San Diego has a housing crunch, as most areas around the country do. But we really want to contribute to the regional housing needs assessment by providing both market rate and attainable housing. The project will be about $400 million in private investment, and that's on our nickel, or maybe our $400 million, at no cost to taxpayers. So we're not seeking any taxpayer funds. Obviously, development impact fees are going to help fund improvements, parks and recreation facilities, as I know you all are aware and been very involved in. So what are we going to do? Construction of 772 brand-new apartments and amenities for all the residents. This is an increase of 272 apartments. We have 500 apartments now. 300 of them, or 40%, will be affordable at the levels to 80% to 120% area median income. 100% affordable at 80% and 200 at 120. And then the 472 additional units will address workforce housing and missing middle, which we know is in short supply in the neighborhood and in San Diego in general. Okay, Derek. So what's the zoning here? It's 31 acres. It's quite a large site. It's obviously an ocean beach or community RM 2.2-dash-four zoning. We got a lot of development standards to go through, and this will be a lengthy process. We've got a coastal height limit, as I know you're well aware of, an airport overlay zone, airport approach overlay zone. We're in a transit priority area. We've got a coastal parking impact overlay zone, sensitive control overlay zone, fire brush zone, fire hazard, you know, just a few things that we have to look for and work with. And our team has looked very carefully at those and how to deal with it. It is a buy-right development and has the capacity for 772 units. We're planning on a transit-oriented development. It's in a transit priority area served by the 35 bus with stops in front of the property already. It's got capacity, obviously, for more housing units. And our goal is to make some really nice connections to open space that don't exist now. Okay, Derek, I'll turn it over to you.
So this is, this is a rendered site plan of what we're proposing here. This is superimposed over the existing, the existing location. And if you can remember back to the previous slide where we showed you the existing community, the big difference here is the amount of green and open space. The original plan was 1980s thinking, where it was all about the car and parking lots, where now we're taking that parking and tucking it underneath and giving that back to open green space and community. You know, we're, as Patty mentioned, we're long-term, we're long-term owners and long-term holders. And so whenever we go into a community, we make sure to make sure what we're building, what we're designing, what we're delivering is for that specific community. And we know that you've done a lot of the heavy lifting already by creating an Ocean Beach Community Plan. So before we start any pen to paper, we go to the Ocean Beach Community Plan and find out what it is that you and your residents are looking for in an overall community. These are just a few highlights from your community plan that we've derived and gleaned in our overall design. The land use is consistent with your Ocean Beach Community Plan, making sure that this, the project, both architecturally and spatially, fits within the context of the neighborhood. Visual interest in building scale is a big concern. A lot of times with the 30-foot height limit, you wind up with just this buzz cut across the 30-foot height, and everything just looks like these blocks. And we've taken great care to really articulate the facade, push and pull, and incorporate these open porches and articulate the roof lines that you'll see in some future slides. Another main component is really mobility. We're on the 35-bus route, but we're also on a bike route and one that Sandag is planning to expand. And we want to really promote that bike route expansion. We're a mile from the beach. Nothing better than riding your bike to the overall beach. This is a colored diagram of the neighborhoods that we're looking to create. It is a large site, as Patty mentioned. It's over 31 acres, and it's 772 units. And we don't just want to drop 772 units in here. We want to curate or break down the scale with individual blocks or individual neighborhoods, not only from an architectural style standpoint, but also from a unit mix and offering standpoint. So we'll have everything from one-bedrooms up to four-bedroom townhomes and everything in between. Focused on the community-oriented design before, especially gleaned from the Ocean Beach Community Plan. Each one of these renderings is looking at a different one of those neighborhoods that we looked at before. And you can see there's varying styles in the overall massing and building scale, really pulling from that Ocean Beach community neighborhood, which is quite unique. It's sort of a patchwork and a quilt of different architectural designs and influences over time. And we wanted to respect that. Architectural features such as balconies, porches and patios. Now, more than ever with COVID, it's really taught us that the value of living in Southern California and how valuable it is to be able to just get outside the four walls of our apartment or our home to be able to enjoy outdoor spaces, private and public. Most of the homes are laid out along courtyards, really influenced by quality landscape design, something that we'll talk a little bit about on the next slide with sustainable design. But native plantings and drought tolerant and drought-resistant landscaping elements, not only for their beauty and their natural ability, but also for their stormwater retention and filtering. This is a rendering from our landscape architect. And again, I keep going back to this, but the existing plan today is essentially a sea of asphalt with 1980s small buildings. And what we plan to do in the future with this proposal is to really open up that space to green space. It creates a great quality community that we're looking for and is also enjoyed by the residents. Building this in now, it's going to be complying with 2020 California Green Building Standards, which are some of the most stringent sustainable design standards in the entire country. So taking a 1980s product that is today and bringing it 40 years into the future is another proposal that we have with this overall project. Minimum 80 electrical vehicle parking spaces, stormwater management that isn't on-site today through biofiltration, 100-foot wetland buffer setback for the Famosa Slough to really help promote the restoration and the preservation of the Famosa Slough and all the beautiful wildlife that is the Famosa. I'll turn this one back over to Patty to touch base on our phase development and relocation plans.
Great. Thank you, Derek. So what happens to the residents? That is very important to us. We're in the business of keeping residents, not putting them out. And we have a really well-thought-out plan for that. I already saw it in the chat. Someone says, what happens to the HUD units? All the affordable residents will stay on-site. They'll remain on-site during construction. Derek will show you a phasing plan, but they'll be able to move on the site, relocated, funded and administered by Aimco. In terms of the market rate residents, we do this quite a lot around the country. And it's a pretty well-oiled plan. Nobody likes relocation and nobody likes construction, for sure. But Mariners Cove already has a 50% turnover per year. What we'll do is have a relocation person on-site, work with residents one-on-one to meet their needs. We'll offer relocation to other Aimco properties, being Aimco, we have seven in the area that we can offer. And as I said maybe earlier, nearly 10,000 apartments in California. We also offer the opportunity for any resident in any Aimco property to go across the country if they wish to do so as well. But the current residents will have the first dibs, the first opportunity to rent at the new community. And we've already heard some interest from some of them, you know, when can I sign up? For several years, but it's wonderful to have that opportunity and to have that interest already. Okay, the next one. So now Derek's going to talk about the phased redevelopment.
So this sort of parlay's into keeping the, keeping the residents who wish to stay on-site, on-site. We're looking at this in a four-phased approach. This color diagram, I'll sort of high-level walk through it here. Up here is the four different phases, the blue, the red, the yellow, and then the darker blue. And this first light blue phase is anticipated to be Phase One. So in this Phase One, we take down around 170 existing units. And as a part of Phase One, we'll build back over 330 units. So after the first phase, we'll already have more units than we started out with in the 630 range, 660 range versus where we have today at the 500. Sorry. So Phase Two, moving clockwise around the project. Phase Two would be this red area where we take down around 200 units and where we take down around 115 units and build back 200 units. Moving on to Phase Three is this yellow area where we take down around 150, build back about 150, and then work our way out of the project, finishing off here in Phase Four, where we take down around 68 units and bring back on about 94 units totaling the 772. This is obviously high-level and conceptual at this point. As we continue to work with the city and develop the overall plan, this construction execution plan will continue to develop. Where we are in the proposed development timeline, as Andrea had pointed out, we're early on in the process. We're coming to the community early to get your comments and feedback. We've, we have submitted to the City of San Diego's Development Services. We're on our second or third round of comments with them as they review our SDP/CDP application. We will have to go through the coastal development process, so for coastal development permit. So after the City of San Diego approves our project, we will go to the Coastal Commission, and we're targeting a building permit of spring 2022. So still a ways away, but an exciting project that we're looking forward to working with the community on. This is a list of our team, and the reason why we put this up here is to really emphasize, most if not all of our team is San Diego-based. And we know how important the community is to you, and it's, it is also important to us. And the local know-how, from the architects to the legal team, to the public relations and everybody in between, it's important to have that San Diego footprint on this overall project. And with that, I turn it over to the Ocean Beach Planning Board. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. So again, we're going to go the same way we did with the Bermuda Stairs. I will open it up to board questions first, move over to community questions, and then go back to the board. This is an action item. We don't necessarily have to take action today. I just left it as an action item in case there was anything that we did want to move on. However, again, these are still kind of conceptual plans, so. So I'm sure, you know, the board might want to see it again, so don't feel like we have to take an action. So with that, please, again, all public persons attending, please put your name in the chat box if you are seeking to comment or ask a question of our presenters. And you'll have plenty of time to do that while we go to board question and comment. I'm going to start it off. I'm going to go from the bottom and work my way up. So I'll start with Jenna this time. Jenna?
Great.
Great.
Yeah. So I have a couple of questions. First, you mentioned how many affordable units will be onsite, but I was wondering if you could clarify how many new affordable units will be built?
We're replacing the affordable units one for one.
So there will be no new affordable units?
Yeah, it's already 40% affordable, which is a large percentage. And then the balance of the rest or the majority of the rest are going to be moderate income workforce housing, probably around 150% median income. The missing middle that we know is so sought after. And as Derek said, there's a diversity of products from townhouses that will be more expensive to, you know, one-bedrooms that will be less expensive.
And so is the most affordable unit then built for 80% AMI?
Yes.
Okay, so just to clarify, AMI in San Diego for a family of four right now is $90,000. So 80% of AMI is, you know, about $80,000 income level. So I just want to make sure that the board knows that that's what we mean by affordable units.
Those 100 at 80% AMI are HUD Section 8 units. So we're under contract for those as well.
Okay, so you can use Section 8 vouchers for the units?
Well, it's project-based Section 8, yeah.
Oh, it's project-based Section 8, okay. Slightly different.
Yep.
Okay, and then I was also curious, can you tell us what energy sources you'll be using and building with for your heating and hot water systems?
All-electric.
All-electric, great. And will you be linking that up to solar?
Yes, we'll be able to offset as much solar as we can and we can fit within our 30-foot height limit.
Got it. Okay, I think those are my questions for now, but I'm sure the rest of the board has other questions and comments.
Jenna, Andrew?
No, I appreciated Jenna's clarity. And I think it's a little telling. It doesn't sound more... There doesn't seem to be more opportunities for low-income. So I'd like to see that built in if at all possible. I'm also curious about how the public space will integrate with non-residents and if it's an opportunity or if it's, you know, a gated community otherwise. And then also just curious for the lowest-income units, how will that compare to current rents? So the folks who have an opportunity to go to an in-between place and come back, are they coming back to the same rent or is that rent being increased?
Well, for the affordable units, the HUD Section 8 are governed by HUD rents. So that will not be an increase. The 120% AMI is still at the whatever level it is at the moment. So it'll be people that qualify at that income level set at that time.
And AMI typically goes up year-over-year, just to be clear.
Do you have any further questions, Andrew?
I didn't agree if there will be public access or community access to this public space. The slot that you're on now looks absolutely amazing. And I'm just curious if that's something that's exclusively for residents or if that's something like a family movie night for all neighbors in the area.
Yeah, Derek, do you want to take that? I mean, one of the key principles is that we will have a better connection to the community than the sort of island effect that we are on now. But Derek, do you want to explain a little bit what we're talking about?
This image on the screen is a resident open space. We are proposing a cafe area in the front, which would be open. We're still working through the public plaza element of it. But some ideas that have been kicked around are, you know, sculpture parks or sculpture gardens. So having public access based on, you know, our relationship with the Barnes Tennis Center.
Okay, so to be clear, so all these public plaza areas other than the street frontage adjacent areas would be for residents exclusively?
Yes.
Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, so I'm moving on to Nicole.
Can you hear me? All right. I think Jenna and Andrew both sort of addressed the questions that I had in reference to the affordable housing aspect. So thank you guys for clarifying that for us. No further questions?
Thank you, Nicole. Tom? You're both still muted.
Oh.
There you go. Can hear you now.
How many parking spaces will there be on the property when it's fully developed?
We're still working through the overall parking ratio, but we're somewhere around, we're code parked.
Say that again.
We will be parked to code.
To code?
Whatever the code is when we submit for the building permit, we will be parked.
Okay.
I believe there's a change in the municipal code to not require parking for residential communities. Is that something that's on your radar?
That's not something our residents would enjoy. It's still, you know, Ocean Beach in San Diego. So while it would be a cost benefit to the project, I don't think we could rent any of the units without the parking. So really, we're long-term holders. And so that's where it goes back to our customer first and not necessarily sort of how to minimize the overall parking count.
Great questions, everyone. I'm moving right along to Kevin.
Regarding the parking, I wanted to just kind of address Nicole's comment. I'm pretty sure this is not in the zero parking overlay. I know it's very confusing on where that applies. The city has messed that up on other projects. So I forgive you, but it is required to have the standard parking, as to my understanding. The questions I have, we talked about the affordable units. And so it sounds like there's 300 now that are classified as affordable. I guess I'm guessing, is there any increase? Does it reset the clock on those? What's the net change in affordable units?
It's the same. It's still 40% of this project. And then again, there's the 150% AMI, which is the missing middle part. The clock is that we are in a ground lease to the San Diego Housing Commission for another 55 years. So there aren't going to be any anytime soon.
55 years from 1980 something or?
No, it was redone maybe five years ago or seven years ago. So we've got a long time left.
Okay. Okay, so I mean, it's revamping the thing and it's adding 270-something, I guess, fair market value units, basically. Is that accurate?
Middle mark, middle mark.
And providing brand, I mean, the units will be brand-new for the 180 and 220.
Yeah, I'm certain they'll appreciate that. I noticed previously there wasn't height limit lines drawn on the plans. And that was on one of the city comments. Has that been amended with your recent submission to the city?
Yes, we resubmitted to the city and addressed all the open items a few hours before this meeting.
Okay, great. Hopefully we can get a look at those next time. I guess I wanted to just express some concern on the parking garage. I think it's seven feet above sea level is what I read on there, which is a little concerning. I hope you've got some robust sump pumps in there. I think there's a floodplain that goes near this area. We've seen other projects fail, maybe not necessarily due to ocean or sea level, but sometimes due to inadequate city storm drains flowing into a project and filling up garages. So keep that on your radar. I get it that you got to fit the parking under there. So I look forward to seeing those updated drawings. Architecturally speaking, if you guys can manage the solar panels and roof slopes and all that and still comply with the 30-foot, then I think it's great and I would support that. But I don't think it's, I think we need to see if the city changes anything as you go forward. So I would look forward to seeing this come up, I guess, next year for a vote.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. George, Paul? Where is yours? Any questions?
I'm good.
Thank you, George. Newman? Okay. Craig, do you have any questions? So, oh, Craig, do you have any numbers on how much more energy-efficient this project will be than the existing project? Thank you, Craig.
We're not far enough along in the overall project. But if you can imagine taking a building that was built in 1980s code and then bringing it to 2020, that would be the only parameter I could have.
All right, thank you. And if that could just be something, you know, you guys bring next time we see the project, greatly appreciated. Okay, moving on to Anthony.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, the design elements, everything looked great. I love the green area and open space. I do have a question. You briefly went over the area to the east adjacent to the Famosa Slough. And obviously with your coastal permit, you're going to have requirements to comply to sensitive lands. But you did mention something about runoff. You know, the question I'm asking could take a whole hour. But what are some of the considerations you're doing to mitigate hazardous runoff and other blutes into the Famosa Slough?
So Brian, our civil engineer from Fusco is on the call. And I'd be happy to hopefully not give you the full hour-long explanation to it, but he can give you a much better high-level explanation of the measures that we are taking. Brian?
Yeah, hi, guys. This is Brian with Fusco Engineering. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So yeah, as Derek mentioned earlier, the existing site does not have any stormwater treatment. So basically, water hits these uncovered parking areas and can just drain off directly into the slough. So with our project, we're implementing a series of LIDBMPs as well as biofiltration. So every drop of water that hits the site goes through a filtration system, meeting the City of San Diego MS4 permit requirements. So there are biofiltration basins that treat all runoff prior to discharging off-site. Right. Cliff Notes version, there's, I mean, it's, in order to get a permit in the city of San Diego, the regulations are extremely stringent. And so just by going through that city process, you can be assured that, you know, the water's going to be treated adequately in accordance with the BMP manual requirements that the city has in place.
Thank you. I'd be interested in looking at that in person someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm moving right along to Chris. The floor is yours for any questions?
Questions and provide comments to data at the project review committee, except for... And those questions and comments continue to hinge on two things. One is the consideration given to our community plan, which I think, at least conceptually, there's been really good progress made in that degree or, you know, on that level. And then the other thing is the current residents and how do we assist them in relocation and those things. And so the question I had, and it was mirrored in the comments somewhere in the mess here, was basically the relocation assistance, does that include financial help for movers and things like that? Or I guess, can we just define what relocation assistance means?
Sure, sure. We will be putting together a package for residents for the affordable onsite that will be on our nickel. And I think somebody asked in the chat, if they're disabled people, would you help move them? And the answer is definitely yes. So we would move them into a different unit at our cost onsite and then move them into a new unit when it's done also at our cost.
Okay, thank you, Patty. So that's all moving costs. That's trucks and movers both ways if needed. It isn't a percentage. It's all moving costs for those affected residents.
Yes, yes, for the affordable units. For others, if they choose to move offsite, you know, some people would like to move away. We'll be working with them one-on-one to figure out what their needs are.
Okay, thank you.
This is Brian with Fusco again. I don't know if Kevin had some concerns about drainage related to the parking structures. Is that something you would like a response to? I heard that come up in the last meeting too. Kind of a statement, but would you like me to kind of give a quick response to that?
Yes.
Otherwise, I'm going to take my kayak in there when it floods.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to give, to provide a little bit of background. So the site is not within a floodplain. It's, the primary challenge with a site like this is related to the, you know, subsurface parking structure and the groundwater. But all of that is planned for through the waterproofing design of the subterranean structure. And this is really a typical design that's common everywhere downtown in San Diego. We do a lot of these projects downtown that go down five levels of subterranean parking. That's all, you know, 30 feet below the groundwater level. So this site is going to be below the groundwater level, but it's planned for with the waterproofing design of the basement. So it's designed completely waterproof. And that's a really common practice that you see all over the city of San Diego. It's very common. So I know it seems a little odd to be doing that, but it's a standard practice throughout the city of San Diego. And it's been working for as long as I've been in the industry and much longer than that.
Enough. I work in the construction defect industry, so it doesn't always work where I wouldn't have a job. But thank you for the explanation.
If it's not done right, of course. But that's why if you hire the right team and, you know, the professional waterproofing designers, which are definitely be on board with this. And obviously, this is all construction document-level detailing that's going to occur, you know, much further down the line. But at a planning level, this is, you know, very minimal amount of groundwater potential compared to many of those other projects you're probably referring to, which go down much further than that.
Thank you. I think that'll be reassuring to some of the other viewers and residents. So I appreciate that.
Great, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, thanks for jumping on and giving the explanation. Okay, so Virginia, you are next.
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation. And my main concern was also with the flooding potential and contamination of that water getting into the slough. And I'm glad that that has been dealt with. And I really like the way you have addressed our planning document with all of the emphasis on porches and patios and walkability, but also promoting the... Interaction with pedestrians and residents to build a sense of community, that's really important to us here. And overall, I it looks like a very nice project. And I know it is in your your best interest as a corporation to take good care of your residents and. Get them through the difficult time of construction, so. I wish you all the best with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Virginia, moving right to Richard Herman.
These guys seem to have an answer for every question and they sound like they really, really know what they're doing, so I don't have any questions right now. But it sounds good, the project looks good.
Thank you Richard. Not Derek, okay, this is me. I'm gonna go ahead and go back to community questions because there are a lot of them, and they've been very patient, so I hope you guys don't mind, I'm just gonna read off what has been in the chat and we can just go through them. So I have my first one is. What is the estimated square footage for one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms or four bedrooms if you have them?
We're not there yet.
Okay. Someone did have a question, when you mentioned you were you had project based section eight vouchers, could you please help everyone out what the difference between those and other section eight vouchers are?
Sure, project based section eight is not a voucher, it goes with the property. So goes with the unit. Vouchers be the tenant can move, the resident can move anywhere to another thing, so it stays with the property. And I saw another one in the chat while we're at it is will the HUD units be mixed in with everybody else, and the answer is yes. We're not gonna have a HUD section and the, you know, this section or that section, so it'll be one very diverse, interesting, hopefully vibrant community.
Wonderful, and then we did touch on parking a little bit, but I would, it's not so much a question more as an emphasis of having at least one parking spot per unit, we are underparked now and there is little to no street parking. On West Point Loma Boulevard, so just moving forward, you guys do seem very resident focused and it is still. Everyone is still pretty reliant on cars to get out of the neighborhood and around San Diego. To do, I had, and then someone, will you have any EV, how many EV charging stations are you planning to install?
Eighty.
Eighty, awesome. Okay. Do do do, and then that's, that was answered, that was answered, that was answered, one more. Issue with rules on residents with plants, please either, oh, so some they. So from Veronica B, she has an issue with rules on residents with plants and would provide gardening plots or have more reasonable rules.
We'll take that one under consideration, obviously what is designed has a lot of open space and a lot of area, but. Yeah, we'll take that one under consideration in terms of gardening plots.
Thank you, yeah, do I have any more questions from the community? I'll let them pop it into the chat, I did have one that I did ask, so when you you mentioned that you do have. Apartments still in Point Loma area as well as greater San Diego. Are you planning on giving residents with children in the school district priority to move into units still in district? Or how is how is that going to work with moving families around? Because if they didn't. District, they would have to switch schools and that could be, especially if they're planning on moving right back.
Sure, great question, and I think that's part of what we do with our relocation person on site, they will work with these residents one on one, then, you know, you'll see someone with children and their needs are. They need to be near the school district, so we'll do the best we can to try and find them. Another place so they don't have to move to school districts, and again, it's very high touch, one on one.
Great, alright, I mean, that's the best you can hope for one on one attention, I do have, and Betsy, yes, this project is in the Ocean Beach Planning Board District. So while our presenters were nice enough to go to the other planning board groups, we would be the final planning board to give approval or denial. Awesome, so, oh, I have, well, oh, I'm sorry for missing that question, will there be washer and dryer hookups in each unit?
There'll be washer and dryers, not just the hookups.
Oh. That's awesome, and thank you guys so much, so do I have any more questions or a desire from the board? To make a motion or?
Someone else also asked about the square footage of the one, two and three bedrooms, was that answered?
They, yeah, they don't, yeah.
Okay.
Because I think, so I think at this point, if there's not anyone seeking to make a motion to kind of ask for an inclusion, any inclusionary aspects of this project that you think we're missing. I would, I think we would prefer to have someone make a motion to continue until. The project is a little bit more firm, so I saw that you guys were seeking a Q one planning commission hearing. So you would likely be coming back to us maybe February or March, or what is your really timeline for having, you know, maybe? These plans at eighty percent finished or ninety percent finished and they can come back to the board?
I think we would come back to you after we finish the review cycle process with the. The city of San Diego Development Services, so if if this recent submission. Does address all of their their comments, then we'd be looking to to come back to you in in Q one, if we've missed an item or some some additional items. Do show up as a part of the review process. We'd be a little bit later than than Q one.
Okay, great, so then, yeah, I would. Probably like to motion to continue this until we see a cycle review with almost all cleared, it should save for, I would say, SEQA and our. Approval, that's where the brain of stairs was at tonight when they presented. Does that sound fair to the board and everyone else?
Yes.
Objections?
I'll second that.
Thank you, did you, and were you able to take them, jot that down?
It was to continue until we see. Additional cycle review. Including SEQA. Is that correct?
And SEQA, I think that comes, that comes later, the brain of stairs still haven't cleared SEQA.
I don't think SEQA is generally something that we wait on.
Yeah. But it is a checkbox on the cycle review comments, cleared or uncleared.
It's usually, yeah, that it.
Yeah, it's usually unclear, but that's, so I was saying until their last two checkboxes would be SEQA and US.
Okay, so so until we see. Completion of cycle review. Except for SEQA.
Yeah, because that does come later, so that would be, you don't want to hold you guys waiting on that. Okay.
Can we, can we add a little bit more flexibility, just because that again, rely on all of the comments being cleared, similar to having this meeting here?
I mean, we, we could potentially hold up the project if we wait till every single box is checked, I think we've let people slide on some of this stuff. Sort of the discretion of the of the chair. On that, when to agendize it. So I wouldn't be opposed personally to. Relaxing that motion a little bit.
Sure, I just would prefer, you know, I want to see, we want to see plans that we have. That we feel certain aren't going to change once we give our approval. Yeah, so, yes, I can relax, I've been doing this a lot, I can kind of know what to look for, but we can change it to until sufficient. Issues have been cleared.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries guys, okay, so I'm gonna call the roll, I'll start from the bottom again, just keeping in trend for this item. I did see one final question kind of sneaking at the end here, if you're a disabled resident, can you be assured a downstairs unit if you are in one already? Or will there be elevators?
There won't be elevators, but you know, we always do reasonable elevations, we're not gonna put a disabled person upstairs. So again, it's we'll work with people one on one to make sure that they get the best unit that meets their needs, that's a great question, thank you.
Yeah, and it does seem like maybe some preliminary outreach and putting them in touch before they need to meet with this moving person. Is that, we don't usually get this many participants on our meetings, so I do think there's, you know, a lot of nervous nerves around this project. But you guys seem to really care, so just the sooner you get out ahead of it in our experience, the better.
And we appreciate it, it's meetings like this that really make the project better. And hearing your concerns and thoughts and support on some things is just, is just, we appreciate the time.
Yeah, and thank you guys for giving us so much of your time, you guys, I know you've been to all the different planning boards, so, you know, we do appreciate it, but we do have a motion on the ground, so. I'm going to, I'm going to call the roll, so I, so Jenna?
I will vote yay, but I would really strongly encourage that more deeply affordable units are considered as part of the property so that we can ensure we continue to have a mixed income community here.
Thank you. Myself, yay, Andrew?
Yes.
Yeah. I have Nicole Lano.
Yes.
Okay, I have Tom Krowansky.
Yes.
And then Jane?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes.
Awesome, George?
Yes.
Newman? Awesome, and then Craig, I see no objection, is that still? Okay, great, I have Anthony.
Anthony says yes.
Great, Chris?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes, alright, great. Virginia? Richard?
Richard says yes.
Awesome, Richard, okay, and Derek and Tracy are not here, wonderful, so yes, I mean, the city sends the cycle review comments to me directly. So we will be copied on those same email threads, so moving forward, we can just be in touch with how far along. The project is and when we can best agendize you, Kevin, is this something you'd want to see in front of the project review committee, or do you think it can just come back to the full board?
Send it to the full board.
Okay, wonderful, we don't want to hold you guys up. Anymore, so, yeah. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, you too.
Everyone who's attending, and if I have any community members who are seeking to, I guess, be, get more information about this, again, please get in contact with me. And I can get you all the information and contact info you need. Thank you all.
Thank you everyone.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, so we have, this came out of the transportation committee's meeting for this month, and it was a request. To install an always stop sign at Cape May and Froud, that was initiated by the community. And it, they have gone through the typical channels where you ask the city to. Do a traffic report, evaluate the intersection, whether or not it would be available for a four way stop, the city has now done that evaluation twice and come back. No, both times, but the community members still feel strongly that there. Is a lot of accidents, it's at the, you know, the bottom of a big hill and the. Cape, I do believe, so the Cape May is where the stop sign is, Froud doesn't have the stop sign, so they're coming down at high speeds and they're having a little bit of trouble. Braking, I'm just, if you give me one moment, I do have one comment that's. I'm trying, here we go, from the community members. I need reading, I'm getting so old. I thought a four way stop at Froud and Cape May intersection would be a smart idea for a while, I witnessed near misses and odd events on a very regular basis. Visibility crossing Froud is not great and cautious drivers much in quite a ways into the road to see crossing traffic. Drivers also have a tendency to catch quite a bit of speed coming down the hill. High speed and low visibility is not a good combination, I hear cars scraping the bottom of their cars as they hit the dip in the hill and honking at old asses. Additionally, this neighborhood has lots of children, including my own, who play outside nowadays, I think a four way stop would make for a safer environment for them. Thank you for your work on the planning board and taking the time to consider my thoughts. So the transportation committee did move this out, I think unanimously, with. Some discussion about further safety improvements along Froud, unfortunately, I didn't attend the transportation committee. And Tracy is out, is the chair of that. Do I have?
I attended this subcommittee meeting, I don't know if there's anything more than what you already covered, but if you have more specific questions, I can try to answer.
Yeah, so I will start with, I guess, board, and fortunately, I don't think we have any. Do we have anyone from the public who was one of the people who initiated this request?
Yes, can you hear me?
Go for it Dan.
Okay.
Yes.
The whole thing for, I live on pretty much the corner of Froud, Cape May, and it's a unique street in the fact that there's no stops from Newport to Voltaire, no stop signs. As starting down from the water abbey all the way to Venice have stop signs, Venice has actually five speed bumps, no stop signs, so. I think people kind of take advantage of that and the speeds they get up through this section, I don't see it anywhere else in Ocean Beach or Point Loma really. For the local, this twenty five mile an hour style streets. I think Uzo, one block up is more of. Kind of a light street to us, to Froud, and it has three stop signs in that same distance where we have none, so you do see some pretty kind of outrageous reckless stuff. And it makes it really hard to leave the alleys with some visibility, we give it, we think about someone traveling just twenty five miles an hour, you can have the visibility and turn out, whereas if they're going forty, you cannot adjust for that speed, so. I've personally been a part of, or witnessed two accidents in the alley next to me as well as. Few on Cape May and Froud and several up and down the block, and usually you have to do a speed. I'm the one, I've petitioned twice to the city about stop signs, and both times they come back saying there's been. No injury or significant accidents at this, at this site, at the stop signs, I mean, at the four way intersection right there. And I'm more concerned about, I don't know if they've done research with a block or two. And from that site, because there has been injury, I've been a part of different injury accidents because of speed, so I don't exactly what they study when they do these. Kind of inspections, but I've talked to. Four or five of the neighbors who live in the direct area at all sides of the corners, and everyone's. In fact, for it, and they wonder why the city hasn't done something earlier, and with, like, I have kids as well, and the neighbors across the street have kids, everyone has kids in these, in the houses around it, so it's a little bit scary getting in and out of your car and thinking about kids getting out. Into that area as well, so I just would like it to be similar to the different streets up and down from the hill.
Yep, wonderful, thank you, and we've certainly approved of stop signs before, so I am going to start again, do we have any questions or comments on this? I know Craig said he was okay with a four way stop, do we have any other board members wishing to speak?
Yeah, it's just my last opportunity, I would like to.
Um, yes, Kevin, go for it, and then Jane, I see you, I'll get you, sorry, I'm gonna change my layout, it's terrible, okay, now I can see everyone. Okay, this is much better, all right, Kevin, you can go, and then I saw Jane and I think Virginia raised her hand as well. And then I can get to public comment.
I think. As a standard. The board should be viewing these. Looking at the data the city is looking at, which we don't have. In front of us. On the number of accidents, and I get that that doesn't capture everything, I live right next to an intersection as well. That has a two way stop and visibility issues. that has a two-way stop and visibility issues. So I, I don't think this is the proper way to be advocating for additional stop signs. I think at the very least, it seems premature. There, there is a sort of no rhyme or reason to where these stop signs are. There's two ways going east-west and north-south on, on Froud, and they're all over the place on Guzzo. It doesn't make any sense to me. But with that said, there are other options as well. I mean, one of them is, is perhaps the red curbs there are too short and the parked cars are blocking visibility. I know there's dips along Froud. I know every street's a little bit unique. But I guess I would want to see additional info before supporting this. It's, it's not a super busy street compared to some of these. But it might be necessary to break up some of the, you know, you gather up some speed with a long distance with no stop signs. So I'm not necessarily against it. I just think it's, it's very preliminary for the board to support something like this.
Thank you, Kevin. Jane?
I think that if we want a stop sign there, we need to talk to the Peninsula Board. Because only the west side of Froud is in the Ocean Beach Planning Board. In the east side of Froud is in the Peninsula Board. Planning area.
I do, Mandy, do we, does the Peninsula Board, I see you on there, have any plans of taking up this issue as well?
Yes, sorry, I was in the chat trying to chat, and then I lost. Yes, we have this as an action item for the next PCPB Transportation Meeting that will be held on Tuesday, December 8th at 6:00 PM. If you want, the website, tcpb.net, has the agenda where you can pre-register for the meetings. So we will be discussing it on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mandy. Okay. Why do I do that? Virginia, you're up next. I keep muting myself right when I want to talk.
Personally, I would like to see something done, some kind of traffic calming. I don't know if it needs to be a stop sign, but I travel that route uphill quite a bit, and it is difficult to see the cross-traffic. Even if you're inching out there, they come up out of nowhere. So I, I would have said yes immediately to a stop sign, but I think Kevin has a good point. There are other traffic calming measures in the toolbox the city's put together. They should consider those too.
Thank you. Chris?
My comment is kind of a combination of Virginia and, and Kevin. I live on Froud and Long Branch. And there's no question that Froud is becoming a, a pretty large speedway, especially if you're in the know. You're taking that over Ebers or Sunset Cliffs, and there is limited stop signs. In general, I'm a supporter of adding these stop signs, but I was going to say exactly what Kevin I don't understand the placement or how we determine in Santa Monica, because Santa Monica has very few stop signs when you go east-west, and it seems like there, you know, I've observed accidents on that street. So not to say that Cape May and Froud doesn't have issues. I, it does, especially when you're blinded a little bit by the sun that comes kind of creeping over that hill on certain times of day. So all that to say, I strongly support what Kevin suggested is let's try to get a little bit of a uniform situation over another.
Thank you, Chris. I did have, so I did have a community, so Eileen, do you want to take the floor?
Hello, um, yes, I've lived on Froud Street for many years, and, and I come up Cape May to come home and to take a left. I have to get a car out pretty far into that intersection to see if I can take a left-hand turn. And cars are very fast. So the speeding is a big problem, to the point where I have seen cars get airborne. And that's why we can hear them hitting the bottoms of their cars after that happens. So I'm, I'm worried about the neighborhood. I'm worried about the children. I'm worried about the families. There's a lot of families, you know, walking. And I'm very worried about the alleys too. So it's a big problem.
Yeah, definitely, especially as Chris pointed out, as Ebers gets more impacted, we're just going to keep moving, you know, one street up and having these continual, continual, continual problems. Do I have any other board members who have comments or questions? Or public? Okay, so kind of piggybacking off of Kevin, there, you can, I know, put on the Get It Done app, if there are red curbs on the corners, you can take a picture of it. You are supposed to, I believe, have five feet of curb painted for visibility. And if that is not the case on your corner, please do put it into the Get It Done app and do that now. It's kind of a first step to get the visibility. And if people, if we are looking to make a motion, I think maybe the way forward, and what I'm hearing, is that the traffic study takes into account just that intersection. And I think a request to take into account both of the alleys bookending that intersection wouldn't be out of line as far as a city request to evaluate for a stop sign would be. Dan, do you, yeah, do you know what they were, what was completely entailed in those traffic evaluations?
Yeah, from what the email I got from the planner is, is they said they look at pedestrian usage, I guess, the how busy the street is for pedestrians, and then look at injury accidents and significant accidents that could be mitigated by a four-way stop sign at that intersection only. So they're not looking at the speed. I understand what you're talking about with the curb painting and smaller steps to take. But I'm mostly, I'm also not worried about like how busy it is, like the actual, how many cars. I don't think traffic is very bad on the street. It's more about the speed they're getting from, from Voltaire to Newport, just because they can. People are flying because they can hit those speeds. They can't hit at any other speeds. And for some, this section has no stop signs. And like I said, from Abbott all the way up to above the hill, no one else is like this. So I just, I'm just confused why this street and people are choosing to go fast down the street because they can. So.
Right. And it does sound like, yeah, the amount of speeders on the street should be another statistic taken into consideration when deciding whether or not to put a stop in, but that's really not the case. Okay.
Can I comment on that, Andrea?
Yes.
This is Kevin. So the intersection I live by is, is very, very similar to this. Probably has a little more traffic and more pedestrians. Has a dip, has visibility issues. The fact is, the city will refuse a four-way stop based on lack of pedestrians. They put them there to provide a safe crossing. The, the speeding issues is, is not something they're going to address with the four-way stop typically. The visibility issues, they'll address with longer curbs. I, I know there is some red painting there, but I don't think it's enough. I reported on the app, the intersection by my house where there's a lot of near misses, and I, I'm working at home, so now I hear it all day long. I hear the crashes and the skid marks. They painted about 20 feet of red curb along the thru street there, and it's definitely improved the visibility for pulling out and, and, and crossing the street. So absolutely, I would recommend taking that first step. I think the board would want to see what this criteria is that the city is looking at. But I think you're asking them the wrong question. You're asking them for a, for a solution to a different problem. I think what we need to ask for is for speed enforcement, which is kind of a wishlist item. And also ask for anything that will do traffic calming to provide for and provide better visibility. And that may not be a four-way stop. I would, I would move to I want to say nay, yeah, or nay on this, but I would move to table this item until we have additional information. That's my motion.
Additional information from the city about how they pick and choose what intersection, four-way stops, or, yeah, what are you seeking?
I want to see their, do they not, do they perform a traffic study? If so, I want to see that.
Okay.
And I'm also curious what Peninsula has to say about it, obviously, since it's on our board.
Okay, then do you want to repeat your motion to see if you can get a second?
Yes, I, I move to table this item until we can see more information, including a traffic study. Who was the second from?
Chris. Great. So I have a motion on the table. I'll start back from the top again. Make Tracy, Jane? Do you need me to repeat the question? Or?
Say again.
Yes. So a motion to table the discussion about a four-way stop until we can see the traffic study and what Peninsula wants to do.
Okay, has it been seconded?
Yes, by Chris.
Okay. I'll second it.
I wanted to second.
All right, so you're both yes then? Okay, wonderful. All right, Richard? Do you need me to repeat the motion or yay, nay?
Back Kevin's motion.
Thank you, Richard. Virginia?
Thumbs up or down?
No, it's Virginia, not Jane. I think, are you frozen, Virginia? Ah, yes, okay, thank you. Chris, you were second. Okay, I have Anthony.
Yes to the motion.
Thank you. Craig is a yes. I saw it in the chat. Newman?
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Kevin?
I mean, yes, Craig was a yes to the stop sign. He wasn't necessarily yes to.
Well, just said yes at 8:08. Yeah. He said yes. Wait, okay, wonderful. Okay, Kevin, we have Tom. Nicole?
Yes.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yes.
Thank you. Myself, I will also support this motion. Jenna? Thank you. Okay, wonderful. So I'll, I will, Tracy, but Dan, we will, I think what I'm going to ask Tracy to do is to have another transportation committee re-agendize this for our next transportation committee. So we can see what Peninsula is doing and then hope, and in the meantime, I'll reach out to the city and see what, where the traffic, where the most recent traffic study was, collect some more information so that we can formulate another plan with Peninsula, and then we'll bring it back to the board when it's more fleshed out. That sounds good.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your attendance today, and hopefully we can come up with a solution. Because yeah, the, the stretch between Newport to Voltaire is too far to go without stop signs. Thank you, thank you all. Okay, so we're moving on to our last agenda item of the night. Hopefully this one will be quick. We've just been having trouble getting a quorum with our short-term vacation rentals. Our community members kind of aren't showing up anymore. So we just want to re-establish it, and I know there has some, been some resignations also from our board members, so we can have a quorum. So whatever happens at Planning Commission, we can meet again in January and then push forward with whatever shape that's going to take, whether that then comes down to working with council to come up with a new with, with new set of policies or working within what how this moves forward, whether that be joining city council or whatnot. So do we have any desire for anyone else to join the SDR subcommittee or to reform it?
Can I introduce this a little bit more?
Yeah, go for it.
This is Kevin. So we've had four meetings so far. I, I know at least one of the board members that initially joined in retrospect, didn't really have the time to, but I never really technically resigned them because it didn't really matter for the quorum. But then additional subcommittee members were missing a lot of meetings. So I guess I'll name names. Jordan from the community has attended one of four meetings. Jenna had said she wasn't going to participate, and she hasn't. I think Virginia attended one of four meetings as well. So I'm hoping that some other board members or anyone in the public here tonight that's interested in the issue and is committed to attending would take their place if they are interested or aren't able to. Also, a, a member of the public, Pedro, is on the subcommittee as well. He's attended three of the meetings. He is not here tonight, but I would recommend keeping him on the, on the committee.
And this is Anthony. I just wanted to add, the, the subcommittee itself is a is a temporary committee. So when we get a, a motion in front of the board to make a recommendation to the board, it probably will disband. Right now, it seems like we're tackling the MOA and, and other issues related to ordinances that are going to be created to try to increase housing. So it's, it wouldn't be a long-term commitment on everybody's part, but it is very interesting too. So I just recommend if anybody wants to get in, and we'd be happy to have you.
I think this is a super important issue in this community, and I'd like to be involved in the discussion. I think, Kevin, you were probably referring to me perhaps about stepping back to commitments, but this is a, a subcommittee that meets every other month, correct?
I mean, sort of on an as-needed basis, I guess, like Anthony said. Really depends on what's coming up. You know, if something passes council, there's no need for it, right? I also wanted to mention, while I get the mic, Beth McCullough has shown a lot of interest in this, and I don't know if she's on tonight, but maybe George can speak for her if she's interested in becoming a voting member of the committee.
I can't commit for her, but I tell you what, why don't you put me on, since we've both been paying attention to it anyway?
All right. Anthony, as the chair, and I know Kevin as the secretary, is there because we have been having issues with quorums, so I, I am concerned. You know, I don't limit anyone who wants to join, but we do want to make sure that moving forward, we have enough people to hold these meetings. Is there, so would there be a?
I think that should be fine. I mean, two more, two, three more people would fill in the plate, the spots of the other folks that couldn't commit. So I think it would, it'd be a wash. And Mandy asked when they're held. We've, like, like Kevin said, we've had to sporadically schedule them here or there, but I'm trying to get them a week before or a week after our regular board meeting. Because if you do it in the same week as this regular board meeting, then it's a it's, it's tiresome. And so I'll poll everyone going forward to see maybe what would be an optimal time and date. Typically, it's the 6:00 PM on a weeknight. The, the opposite week of our, of our board meeting.
Great.
On here, Kevin, I'd be happy to add my name to the list too. My availability might be a little bit stretched, but I'd be happy to add to that group so that there is a quorum, and I'll make every effort to attend, especially if we think we're going to have less attendance. So, so please put my name down.
Thanks, Chris.
Kevin, this is George. I just checked with the boss, and she said, why don't you replace my name with hers?
Okay.
All right, so how, so how many people do we have so far?
Hang on a second. Being attacked by children. The. I I think I have seven. If. I I excluded some of the board members that haven't been able to participate. I have right now, I have myself, I have Pedro, I have. Nicole, Bueno, Bev McCullough. Andrea. Anthony and Chris. So that's seven names. And I also excluded Jordan from that, who has only attended one of the meetings, so I would. If I was making a motion, I would exclude him from that.
Right, so then we would need five to show up on a consistent basis.
Four.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
One and up. Okay. So that, so I mean, we, so Anthony, myself and Kevin have been showing up to all of these and Bev has too, so I I think that would be safe with the quorum if we approve that membership.
Agreed.
Agreed. And then again, yeah, Virginia, if you want to come, of course, you're always more than welcome to come. But, yeah, now we just won't be dependent and.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure if you can't and you're getting swamped. Okay. Okay, so can we make a motion to approve that membership and get everyone off before 8:30? I do have a few announcements.
I make a motion to approve the membership as stated.
Thank you, George.
From the motion.
Thank you, Jane. Did you get that, Kevin?
I did.
Wonderful. Okay, and since it's just us girls now, I'm just going to ask if anyone objects and not do the roll call. Yeah, okay, wonderful. Close that out, great. We, so tailing off onto that, tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Is when Planning Commission meets again. I already, you know, I hope you all have already typed in your comments. If not, no worries. I will put. Where is? Oh, no. Here it is, DSD. Okay, there we are. So please just take, you know, five minutes of your time tonight. They, all the comments have to be submitted by 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. You also, and if you want to sign up to speak, hopefully they'll give us one or two minutes. The meeting starts again at 9:00 AM, so at at least if you can't call in, please do leave comments in opposition. It is item one on the agenda tomorrow.
Leave a comment in support.
You can do that as well. Sorry. Okay, coming up, we, so our next meeting would usually be. Dark because it falls on the first or the second, but it does fall on the sixth, so I am planning on holding the January meeting so we can form an election committee. That's really just my big major goal on that. Elections are coming up. I'll send out an email for everyone as well, so it's in writing, but just to go through who is up for election. It's 2021, so it's everyone in an odd seat. So Richard, you're up for election. Chris, you're in an odd seat. Craig, I have you in an odd seat. George, I have you in an odd seat. Tom, I have you in an odd seat. Andrew, you're seven odd. And then Jenna, you are also at large odd. So you are all up for reelection. I please hope you'll come on back and get your needed signatures. We did lower the requirement to just 20 signatures. So everyone who isn't up for election, I also hope you will consider serving on the election subcommittee. It's not that much work, you know, all of the documents are already out there. We just got to change the dates and you just have to verify signatures and then. It's probably all going to be by mail this year. The city still hasn't been very clear on how they want us to run our elections, but luckily we already have a vote-by-mail system in place. So. The election committee is probably going to talk about this a lot more, but that's the likely route we're going to go. In the meantime, though, everyone should be encouraging anyone you know. Who who wants to get involved more in the community to please go ahead. Come to our January meeting because we do need you to attend one meeting prior before you're eligible to run. So anyone you know who's thinking about joining the planning board, thinking about getting involved, please do encourage them to come to our January meeting. Last thing I have is budget. So as it was, as it's been kind of alluded, we would usually be talking budget numbers. I've kind of forestalled the budget talks for a little bit because. I just don't even know where it's going to go. So budget is still on my mind and that also might be a January topic for discussion, so please do. You know, think about our needs, our wants, our priorities for next year, and that will be another discussion we'll pick up in January as well. That is the end of Chair Reports. I have, Craig is having a little bit of issues, but he did send me the Treasuries Report. Let me get that. Hold the way. Oh, wait, he texted it to me. I'm looking in the wrong place. Here we are. We have 13, $1,358.17 in the budget, so we're in good standing. The only thing that will be coming up here quickly now is our PO box renewal, which. We may not have to renew. So Craig and I will talk offline about that, about what we want to do there, because we have gone all digital with the way we receive plans. So, you know, we may want to save that expense. Tracy's sick, but she'll be back. You know, wish her, wish her well. Kevin, do we have a vice chair report or anything from PRC?
Tentatively, there's a project committee meeting still scheduled for December 16th. I'd rather not do it. But it, stay tuned. If you're on the committee, I will let you know. If it's worth having a meeting and I'll, I'll reach out to make sure we have a quorum before I waste your time. And I also want to express absolutely, get, get your written comments in or sign up to phone in for the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow on the vacation rental issue. The longer you wait and the further along it gets, the less likely anything will change on it and it's very bad. And I can go into detail with any, any one of you if you want to talk about the details of the of the proposal from Campbell's office, but that's all I have.
Awesome. I do have any other committee reports or reports from other groups that anyone's been to?
I do have one. I did want to ask Kevin, though, really quick, did Jen Campbell send out a modified proposal since the last meeting?
She sent a memo. Or, sorry, actually.
At least Lowe sent it.
Sent a memo to try to kind of answer some of the Planning Commission questions. I don't, I think it missed the major points. The proposal itself has not changed at all.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, any other committee liaisons? Are there such reports?
Just that the Airport Noise Committee meets in two weeks, December 16th at 4:00 PM. And I know it's weird because there's not too many planes flying overhead, but I know a lot of community members are still very, have this on their minds, so let them know and have them contact me if they want to join the meeting or listen in, please.
Awesome, thank you. And thanks again all for your volunteering. Happy holidays.
Question, question.
Yeah, George. Sorry, Richard. Yeah, yeah.
What's the word on this Christmas parade? Has it been canceled?
No, it is a backwards Christmas parade, so we've chosen not to participate, but the parade's still going on.
Wanted to know, okay.
We're not going to participate this year.
And that's going to be this Saturday?
This Saturday, yeah. For slot. Town Council is encouraging it to make sure everything moves along and goes swimming.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're cutting out, Craig? Yes. You're just trying to say hi, I thought, all right. I know, it's been, it's been a quiet meeting with Craig having such, no, I'm just teasing you. All right, thank you, thank you all again. And happy holidays, yeah.
You too, thanks.
Bye.
Ask Santa Claus for a new computer, Craig.